Good evening, welcome to this special meeting of the South River Mayor and Borough Council. Today is August 9th, 2021. I'm calling this meeting to order. The statement of notice of publication will be read by the clerk.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting was given by way of annual notice filed with the Borough Clerk, the Home News Tribune on August 4th, 2021, and posted to the Borough website, the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, and the Bulletin Board in the Borough of South River Municipal Building on August 3rd.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Council President Seula?
Here.
Councilman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Gorchensky?
Here.
And Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
And Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Okay, please rise and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. This is a special meeting for ordinances alone, no reports or comments from anyone except the public. The only comment I'll make is that Drew Pearson is always a classy man at his induction into the Football Hall of Fame. He mentioned the South River Rams, Al Lozovic, Coach Joe, and Richard Ballas. He entered the Hall of Fame with class, and good for you, Drew. There are no...oh, one other thing. By tradition, the mayor buys a shirt to the new council member. Jason is officially welcomed.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a heavy agenda tonight, so there are no proclamations, no executive session, no agenda session. We have ordinances, second reading, and the public hearing again. We will have this because it was continued from the last meeting, 2021-06. Madam Attorney, do we read it again, or do we simply open it up to the public as we were simply continuing it?
I would read it, yes.
Okay, we'll do it as if we were doing this for the first time, so if you could be so kind.
Ordinance 2021-06, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 350 of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled zoning.
Make a motion to wait the full reading.
Motion has been made to wait the full reading by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilman Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public for discussion, please give your name and address. If you have any thoughts, comments on this ordinance, on first call, second call, third call?
Make a motion to close. Dr. Byrne?
Hi, Dr. Byrne, 11 Bissett Place. My only concern on this ordinance is several years ago, the council decided to ban parking on public streets in the residential zones, and back then, there were people, I assume, who went and got either zoning permits or zoning variances to expand their driveways so that they could park their work vehicle in the driveway. And at the time, you know, they did not request conditional use variance because it wasn't required at the time. So my concern is that there's no provision in the ordinance as written that, you know, there's no grandfathering of people who went through the right procedure in past years to get the permits to put their driveway in a configuration where they could park these things. And now, you know, what do you do? I mean, would you have to go to the zoning board and, you know, apply for a use variance to park your thing in there? Or...so, you know, back when, 2018, I believe, the council amended the zoning code to specify that replacing a driveway didn't require a zoning permit as long as it was in the same dimensions. And at the time, the way it's written, it grandfathered in all previously permitted and non-permitted existing driveways that were non-conforming at the time. So that's my only concern on this, is that there's no provision for people who went through this process back then, and, you know, what do they do now? So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close. Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Make a motion to move the ordinance?
Second.
Motion has been made to move the ordinance by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a few questions. What will be the policy on this once it becomes law? Did anybody make policy on this? How is it going to be enforced? What is the penalty? How is off-street parking enforced now? That's actually on the street, that people park their trucks? Anybody?
Yes, please, sir.
So to answer your question, how it's enforced? If it falls under the category of a oversized vehicle, such as a tractor-trailer, a mason dump, a triaxle, a flatbed, a vac truck, and a neighbor complains, the neighbor would automatically call the cops. The cops would actually answer to the call. The cops cannot give an actual ticket because it's sitting on the person's property. But what they can do is they can actually report it. The next working day, they forward it to code enforcement. Now, code enforcement takes precedence over it, and then they actually issue an actual ticket. That's how it works.
So it's going to be a straight ticket? Nobody's getting a warning?
It's up to the discretion of the code enforcement.
Well, that's where I'm asking, why are we not making that policy?
Well, because the policy's already in place with the code enforcement.
What is the policy with the code enforcement?
The policy is that he has the right to actually ticket a person, but, Tom, our code enforcement has been very, very lenient with a lot of things he's been doing in this town. So he's been going out of his way to give that fair warning.
This is a new law that not everybody's going to know. There's, of course, selected people that do know what's going on, but not everybody knows. Not everybody knows what tonight's vote is going to be. Not everybody's going to know when this is going to take effect. Is code enforcement prepared for this?
There's been several meetings over this. So if you haven't picked up on it yet?
Well, several meetings, that didn't have to be several meetings.
Whatever it is.
Money wasted on something?
Whatever it is, in the end of the day...
Right now...
...it's very well informed to not only everyone that's sitting in this room, but also in this town. So if you're going to tell me that you didn't know about it, I'm sorry, but I don't know where you were this whole entire time. Sorry.
I'm not talking about myself. I'm pretty sure there are a lot of residents who have no idea...
I'm sure.
...that this law is coming into place today.
You're absolutely right.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that we know, or going forward, we're going to warn people, make them aware, not just start ticketing people. Do we have...what is the fine going to be for this penalty?
That's code enforcement, based on parking. Now, you did say something prior to this whole entire conversation. You said that commercial also sits on the road, and yes, it's prohibited. Well, it's up to the discretion of the police officer if he chooses to actually give the ticket. Our police officers do their best that they can. They are very, very lenient when it comes down to the word "commercial," especially when it comes down to pickup trucks. But when it comes down to something like 18-wheeler sitting on the side of Whitehead Avenue, or better yet, a mason dump that's sitting in the middle of a parking lot that is private, yes, you're probably going to end up with a ticket.
I brought this up because Ms. Ballas mentioned it at a prior meeting, that her concern was off-street parking with commercial vehicles. And we're bringing up...
We already addressed it.
And we're bringing up people putting it actually on their property.
Well, when it comes down to the property, such as what Mr. Byrne said, when it comes down to the driveway being extended, that has nothing to do with the word "commercial." It's more based on the actual resident that wanted to extend their driveway. Their extension is not based on commercial. It's based on the ordinance and based on them getting the actual permit for it. So it's just like, for example, I'll use my parents' house. Their driveway was extended. Had nothing to do with the word "commercial." It just had something to do with three sons that happened to have vehicles in their house. That's what it had to do. And he went through this proper procedure to actually do so. But here, I'll help you out in a better way, if you don't mind. The rumor in the town was that everybody kept on saying that, oh, "commercial" is going to hold precedence over the word "pickup trucks." It's a lie, plain and simple. I will use the word "rumor" and switch it around and say it's a lie. What happened was, the whole entire ordinance was based on the word "heavy-duty, oversized vehicles." What you're trying to do is you're trying to be a little bit more considerate to your neighbor, for that matter, your neighborhood. Unfortunately, we lost sight of that. Now, yes, I had the opportunity to sit with a lot of interesting people, including these contractors sitting out here. And we spoke about this in length, and trust me when I tell you, their concern was just as important as mine. Listen, I happen to have quite a few pickup trucks in my company that I work for. So does your husband. He comes home with a pickup truck.
No, it doesn't.
All right? Whatever may be. But in the end of the day, I'm not holding this over a pickup truck. This is the least of my problems. My problem happens to be when somebody comes home with an 18-wheeler late at night and thinking it's okay to sit next to your neighbor that sits only two or three feet away from their window, or for that matter, a mason dump. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to put a, I guess you could say, an ordinance in place, which we're working on now, to be a little bit more considerate towards your neighbor. I understand your concern, but believe me when I tell you, I'm not going to put something on myself, or for that matter, these hard workers out here, when they have multiple employees that come home with the word "pickup truck." I don't really...I'm not holding it over that. That's why I made it a point to be very itemized and very detailed about the word gross-weight vehicle. And if you look at the third paragraph, it actually details exactly what this really honestly covers.
Are you done?
I'm done for now.
Okay. So in the second paragraph, where you say "commercially registered pickup trucks having 14,000 pounds gross vehicle weight," yes, but you're also saying that vehicle specifications are permitted to park privately in a residential zone. "Commercially registered pickup trucks of any weight which have a trailer, a compressor, any sort of tow behind, ladders, forms, and other material on the overhang racks are prohibited."
That is correct.
Okay. And you're going to say that there aren't vehicles of these hard-working people who come home with trucks like that? Pickup trucks?
With...
Specifically right here?
If they come home with a pickup truck, free and clear of a pull-behind trailer, a compressor, or a mixer, then it's prohibited.
Okay, mixer isn't even on here.
Well...
Okay. But I'm just saying, I get what you want. You want to specify the only ones on the third paragraph, but you also put the second paragraph in here. And that's still going to affect a lot of people, working people in this town, okay? I understand Mr. Byrne's discussion with the driveway, that you want to say it that way. But you have to understand, people are fixing their house in convenience of them because they need their vehicle to come home. They need to take that vehicle to work.
What kind of vehicle are you talking about coming home?
Pickup...you're going to say you've never seen a truck in town with a ladder behind, overhang racks?
I have.
Okay. You're going to be affecting all of those people that come home.
Ms. Mira, just so you're aware...
Tell me.
This ordinance wasn't just fabricated by me. I sat down with some serious people...
Okay.
...and went over this. I sat down with state officials and went over this.
Okay.
I understand where you're coming from.
You also brought a whole ordinance for the first time, and nobody even looked at it.
First time?
For the first time that this was out, you got...nobody even looked at it. It was all vehicles 10,000 pounds gross weight. Nobody looked at it the first time. If I hadn't brought it up the first time, it would have passed.
Ms. Mira, I'm going around in a circle right now.
No, I just want you to realize, now you're fixing something that didn't have to be fixed if you guys actually saw the things that were being done. If you actually saw what was being written up to be law. And I'm sorry, you're going to affect a lot of people. That's fine. I'm only one person. I can only vote for myself.
You're absolutely right.
But I want to clearly state today what is going to go forward. What's the policy that it's going to be? What are the fines that our people are going to have? And nobody has an answer for me.
Okay.
Can anybody state to me what the fee is for a penalty?
Can I ask you a question?
If somebody gets a ticket for this?
Can I ask you a question? How many meetings have we been talking about this?
Correct. How many meetings have we...
No, no, answer the question.
How many meetings have we dragged this on because of mistakes that have happened?
Whatever. How many meetings have we spoke about this?
And today I have to vote. So I want to make things very clear...
So this is why I'm arguing it.
...so that people understand what's going to happen, because...
Okay.
I'm sure I will get phone calls when people get ticketed. So I would like to know, I would like to know if anybody can answer me, what will be the fine when somebody gets a ticket from zoning for having their vehicle on their own property? Can somebody tell me? Nobody knows, right?
Didn't you say it was up to the zoning officer?
Yep.
How many times now?
Quite a few meetings.
Okay.
There are specific fines in the zoning ordinance. It have a, I believe it have a minimum and a maximum. Give us a second, then we'll...
It would be taking care of your general penalty clause, which is usually, which I'm looking up right now, but it's usually about the maximum of $1,000. But there's always a minimum. It's generally up to the discretion. Hold on, give me one second.
Okay. I'd just like a clear answer. So when I get phone calls of people concerned that on their own property, they cannot put a vehicle, and they're going to get fined, I'd like to let them at least know what their fine is going to be.
Perfect.
Okay. And how many meetings has this been, and nobody knows?
Well, no, no. The problem with what you just said...
What?
How many meetings did it go on, and you decided to ask the question today?
Because today I'm going to vote on it. Today, this has been dragged on for, what?
Julie...
Five meetings already?
This is the problem that we hold as politicians. We wait to the last minute to ask...
Peter...
We wait to ask them, we wait to the last minute to look for an answer.
Let's talk about waiting till the last minute.
No, no, hear me out. We wait to the last minute. See, when this came before me, I didn't wait to the last minute. I made it a point to meet with certain people.
Certain people, okay.
State officials, our contractors that are hard workers...
Which state officials did you meet with?
New Jersey State Troopers, DLT.
Okay.
Code enforcement, to understand who would take precedence, Chief of Police, to figure out how this would actually work. So this didn't happen overnight. This happened over four meetings that we should have...yes, you're right.
Voted already.
Yes. But instead of waiting for questions to be answered, I went out of my way and answered myself. So outside of the word, what is the fine from code enforcement? Okay, you got it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what you waited for.
See, I have to wait until these meetings because...
Why?
Nobody answers me.
Okay.
I email, and I ask questions, and I have to wait until I'm, I guess, in front of a public for people to actually give me an answer.
Give me a few for instances about that.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes.
It's not very often that you answer my emails. Not very often.
What questions you ask? I'm talking about answering. How about you? When you called and complained about that person who, the problem that they were having there, they didn't, they had a problem with the, what was it, de-inspection?
Yes.
Oh, the person came early. You never gave me that name and address to look into that. Why didn't you do that?
Because I spoke with the business administrator, who was...
Yeah?
On the construction code. I just wanted to make you aware that it's not perfect.
Let's get beyond this, all right?
Do we have an answer for fines?
Yes, she gave you the answer.
No, she's looking into it right now.
General penalties, there's a general penalties clause in your code. It is Chapter 350-35, enforcement violations and penalties. And it goes through, and there's a lot of sections, so I'm reading it. If I had this information beforehand, I would have been, I would have had it for everybody. It's 1,000, no more than 2,500. For violations in addition, costs and expenses. Conditional...that's subdivision penalties, that doesn't apply. I would suffice it to say that if we can look in Chapter 350, Section 35. Hold on, wait one more second. And I can, in fact, yeah, I think that's the only one there. So it's your general penalty clause. It's 1,000, no more than 2,500, but there's always discretion.
So this fine can be between $1,000 and up to $2,500?
And, Councilwoman Mira, again, this is off the cuff for me. I'm just looking at your code right now. So there could be another provision that applies, but I didn't have the ability to look into this prior to this meeting. If you would like me to, I can look into it, and I can get back to you via email just to make sure that there's no other provisions that would actually apply in your general penalty.
You can get back to all of us.
I will do that.
Okay, so I just want to make note, we're voting on something today, and we will know, we'll find out what the penalty is.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
First, I just want to thank Councilman Gindy for working on this. I think this is a great step in the right direction, but, you know, 9,000 pounds of the original ordinance would have been a disaster for our blue-collar workers, our workers that, you know, try to make a living. What I would like to see, once this passes, is we also take a look at the vehicle parking on the street. Chief, I don't know if you're able to answer this, but there's a ton of commercial vehicles that already park on the street. I know the officers can't ticket everyone. It happens. We have it on the books. I hope, you know, as a governing body, we take a look at, you know, allowing commercial trucks to park on a street, residential street, to alleviate some of the stress that may be caused. So besides that, you know, thank you, Peter, for working on this. I know it wasn't easy. And thank you to the contractors for providing some feedback.
So we're thinking about not letting them on their property, but putting it on the street?
Not, we're talking about specific vehicles.
Right now, our ordinance says these vehicles can't be on the street anyway.
Correct.
Absolutely right.
Mm-hmm. So just let me know, will we're going to enforce the people who actually keep them off the street?
Councilwoman Mira, think about this, though. How many, you know this, our parents, our Portuguese community, we see vehicles, trucks on the street all the time.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So there's an ordinance that doesn't allow that, but it doesn't get enforced. This at least will allow them to park...again, we're not talking about construction vehicles. We're talking about very specific vehicles that is being prohibited with this. So again, if we're talking about someone bringing vehicle...listen, my father had a company. I remember he would come home, and there'd be, he would wake up in the morning, there'd be tickets on his truck on Marie Street because he parked his commercial truck on the street. And I never understood why. This allows, you know, we have to be flexible, and this is a whole nother issue. But what this ordinance, at least in my opinion, is doing is, we're allowing that, we're allowing commercial trucks to be parked with limiting, what? A dozen trucks in town that are prohibited in this? If we were to drive around town, I don't see this being more than 12, 15 trucks that we're actually referring to.
That's still 12 or 15 residents that require their truck to go to work.
But do they, though?
What do you mean, but do they?
Do they? You need to have a dump truck in your yard, in your driveway? Or is it at a convenience that they have these vehicles there? Which I'm sure that's exactly what it is, at a convenience.
I just think we're bothering the working class. If they were home and didn't work, we'd be complaining that they're making too much noise at home.
But what about the residents that are disturbed?
They take their trucks to work, we're complaining that they're driving a vehicle to work. It's not like the truck is on and sitting in their driveway all day long.
But that's exactly what was happening, though. That's what started this complaint, was that someone had a vehicle and carbon monoxide was pouring into the house. So I understand your point of view, but what about the other residents that are being disturbed? Do they not have the right to...
You have your opinion, and I have shared mine. I just want to know...
That's the great thing about this, civil discourse.
Yes.
You agree to disagree, you know, but that's...
And I'm just hoping to find out how much I'm going to tell people when they don't know, because not everybody in this town knows what's going on, what their fine is going to be. And I'm hoping we can be lenient for warnings until people actually do know what's going on.
Andrea, this ordinance has a 30-day waiting period, correct, before it has to be enforced?
It has, what's, it's a 20? Gestapo is 20. Yes. So it's 20, it's a 20-day waiting period. Hold on.
I believe there's also late restrictions on residential areas. It's just 14,000 pounds, 5,000 would travel.
They're all off-street parking and on your property. It's the 14,000 pounds.
If I may, Mayor, I just, I will get back to you on what the actual fines are going to be. There's just, there's various areas of your code which provide for general penalties. There's one that's, you know, parking fines, which prohibited parking areas is $10. So that one could apply. I just, there's many areas of the code that would, that potentially would apply. So what I will do is I will get back to you on what...
As you should when a question like that is asked. Okay, anyone else? All right, then I'll say the last word. The, what? You want to finish? Please.
This ordinance, from the beginning, when it was brought to my attention, when I tell you, it was very, very hard to actually think about how it would be written out. I did the right thing by reaching out to contractors, New Jersey State Troopers, DLT, Chief of Police. I even reached out to other townships to see exactly what's actually out there. Surprisingly, there was townships that don't even allow commercial periods in their trucks, in their towns, at all. I'm a hard worker just as much as these guys are, okay? I get up in the morning, early, and I go to work, just like these guys do. And something I learned was, the last thing I wanted to do was come home and be harassed by your local authority. Problem is not so much the idea of coming home with what vehicle, it's the idea of coming home and knowing that that neighbor's going to complain because you came home with a triaxle, or a mason dump, or an 18-wheeler. And the reason I'm naming these is because in the last past three years, you have nine exact vehicles in this town that do just that. It doesn't affect these guys because they all come home with the exact same truck, a pickup truck. Whether if it's a Ford F-150, 250, 350, 450, Chevy 1500, 2500 Dodge, they come home with these trucks. Now, the GVWs, once upon a time, used to be 9,000. That made no sense. That was ludicrous. Speaking to contractors, not only did we go at 14,000, that's where the max of these trucks are, but we understood, talking to the DLT of New Jersey State Troopers, that you have to be equipped, you have to cover that actual trailer sitting in the back of your truck. So there's another GVW sitting on the outside of that truck. So, and I had the honor of, or I should say, the privilege of having a truck right in front of one of our local authorities, and I said, "I want you to do me a favor and open up the door." So they saw the manufacturing sticker. It was an F-350, it said 12,500. I said, "Look inside to the right." I said, look inside to the right, and sure enough, there was another number, it said 13.7. And the reason it said 13.7 is because the back of the pickup truck, well, pickup truck was what you call a big utility body. So you have to be equivalent for that actual weight. But then it stopped there, because now he or she that's driving that pickup truck, that has to go down the 287, New Jersey Turnpike or the Parkway, has to go through a weigh station, and they have to have a different type of registration under vehicle to cover theirselves from getting an actual ticket. The State Troopers actually say, you have to go out and weigh out your truck. So in my case, I could come home right now with one of my pickup trucks that reads 25,000 pounds. The reality of it is, it's not, not even close. But the sad part is, yesterday I had to go out and work, and it was an inconvenience for me to, now I had to drive back to my, my business. I was driving a back truck. Guess what the measurement was on that? That was oversized. So instead of me coming home, annoying my back, my next-door neighbor from the rumbling of the truck, the fumes, as you call it, I decided to do the right thing and actually drive all the way to the place of employment. Dropped it off, got in my truck and came back home. The problem is, when you try to talk to some of these people that happen to own these type of trucks, and they tell you, go ahead and take me, I don't care, it shows that they have no respect for their neighbor, and for that matter, they don't care about their neighborhood. I could say that these guys care about their neighborhood, because not only do they respect the law, but they even clean it at the same time. Unfortunately, there are those individuals that just don't see that. So the question I ask to anyone is, are you okay with an 18-wheeler coming home? And we all know that 80% of this town happens to be, houses are sitting right on top of each other. Are you okay with an 18-wheeler backing into the driveway right next to you? Because I sure am not, not even close. And unfortunately, I don't understand what the issue was when we sat there for several meetings and said, you know what, we're going to talk about this. And yes, we had our arguments, we had our talks, and somehow today, here I am, trying to explain it again, and I'm okay with it. I'm, I'll explain it every single day. And I could tell you this, if I'm going to get a phone call, I could guarantee you, it's probably going to be one of five people because they do come home with these type of trucks. Those are the same five people that have been breaking the law for the last past four, five years. These guys haven't. Their employees haven't. And there was a lot more contractors I spoke to that are not doing that. So the way I look at it is, South River happens to be a 2.7-mile town, and I, you know what? Just like these guys, I'm going to make it possible to keep it clean as much as I possibly can. And I'm going to work hard to even get it cleaner. And yes, you said something about commercial out in the street, that's a existing law. Okay, you're absolutely right. But I have a little bit of a surprise for you. I'm working on that ordinance with the local contractors on how we could now make it easier for them, and for that matter, anybody else that happens to come home with a commercial truck, to park out in the street, make it more of a convenience for them. That way I don't have to listen to my next-door neighbor complain that his commercial truck is outside, yet he owns the same exact truck, but without the word "commercial" on his plate. How is that not, how does that fare? I don't get it. So yes, you're going to see quite a few of these ordinances start coming up, and yes, I'm going to be working hard to actually start updating these ordinances where it suits us and the neighbors of, or actually the residents of this town. That's all I have to say. Mayor, you could go up.
Thank you, Mr. Gindi. You've heard throughout this whole debate about neighbors, and that's why this ordinance had to come into being, because people don't care. And we see that not only in South River, but throughout the country. And I'll be addressing that a little bit more, but give you an example. Forget about the tractor trailer coming in, how about just the tractor, the front part that pulls the trailer? Right there on Division Street, you had somebody park their tractor, parked it very neatly in the side, didn't bother anybody until he turned it on before the sun rose, and the whole neighborhood knew about it. You know, can't you stop and think about what you're doing? But people don't care. Therefore, we have to put together an ordinance, and this ordinance worked the way it was supposed to. It was introduced, and that's why you have a second reading, so that people can look at it. And the brouhaha that came up with that, Mr. Gindi withdrew it and rewrote it. That's the way the system is supposed to work. And what is our zoning officer going to do? Normally, he talks to people first. He tries to talk to them. I love the conversation going on in Facebook about somebody complaining about, oh my goodness, I got a ticket for my garbage. Didn't tell about the whole history about how he tried to talk to that person. Don't put it out Saturday morning, don't put it out Sunday morning. Didn't listen. Well, then you got a ticket. It's supposed to be put out the night before they come to pick up the garbage. Well, people don't want to listen, you get into trouble. And that's why we have this ordinance. Didn't want this ordinance, life was good without it, but a few made it bad for the rest. Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas? Council President Seula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to 2021-07, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 350 of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled Zoning.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second up.
Motion by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi to waive the full reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address as to any comments or questions you may have on this ordinance. First call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seula, all in favor? Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to pass 2021-07 ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seula, comments? This concerns our licensing cannabis facilities. Are there any comments? Going once, going twice? Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas? Council President Seula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 2021-08, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 120 of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled Cannabis.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second up.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi, all in favor? Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, if anyone wishes to have anything to say about this or make any comments, ask any questions, please give your name and address on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Now, just so that we understand, by passing these two ordinances, you're voting this as written. So when you vote yes, we are rejecting the Planning Board's recommendations. Uh, and basically, we're doing this because of the time constraint. However, just so that everybody is reminded, this can be revisited at a future date. Because as everybody may remember from the news, you have until August 21st for the towns to say no. Because once you don't, then everybody, you get to have to say yes. So that is why we're moving ahead with these two ordinances. So we are rejecting the Planning Board's recommendations, but again, they can be revisited. Are, is there any discussion, uh, well, let's see, we have to move the ordinance, I believe.
Motion to move the ordinance?
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Olivera. Now, is there any discussions on this? This concerns the zoning portion of the ordinance.
I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor, maybe Andrea will be able to answer. Do we know that when the state will come out with their regulation on the classes and licensing and all that?
They are supposed to come out, I believe it's August 22nd, August 21st or August 22nd. Whether that happens or not, they have not yet, but that was their projected date.
Anyone else?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
I know this is something that's been a big, big talk in this state. A lot of towns have been either rejecting it or approving it. By allowing this, you're bringing in manufacturing, which is the largest tax revenue this town will actually see. Now, I know a lot of people have been questioning a lot of things about it. I could tell you this, the state has a lot of rules over this. So besides what the town may implement, once this does come into our town, the state actually not only supersedes us, but they have even stricter rules and regulations. So I could tell you that this is something where it's not going to be a storefront, nobody's going to be allowed in it. It's something where it's going to be so, you know, discreet, you'll not even know it exists. But you'll know it's going to affect the town by the large, you know, the amount of taxes that's going to bring into our town. Uh, this is just the beginning. I know there's been a lot of talk about other ideas such as dispensaries. I know our town has been against it due to several other issues, but right now, we're taking what you call small steps towards something big. Right now, we're going after the manufacturing part of it, which I think is probably the most cleanest and straightforward part of the cannabis. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, Mayor. As Mr. Gindi said, there's no retail at all in town. So they can do the manufacturing of it, but there is no retail. And we are limiting to just two licenses, once the state approves that application. So there can be no more than two licenses in town. And it's got to be in a business and light industrial zone, it can't go anywhere near a residential zone or a school zone. So just want to bring that up also.
Anyone else?
Quick question, the, the revenue, the tax revenue that goes through this, does that go into our capital fund? Or is that going to be set aside for something specific?
I think council would actually decide that, right?
It could be a general fund, I believe.
Goes into, it's a tax that goes into the general fund.
I believe it goes in the general fund.
So will that be something we look into to alleviate towards our residents?
We're not going to count our chickens before they hatch. Mr. Gindi has viewed that it's going to bring in lots of money, I hope that he is absolutely right. Anyone else? Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. We made the deadline, hallelujah. 2021-09, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance authorizing various federal housing and community development grant improvements and equipment.
Motion to waive the full reading?
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindi to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Seula, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening up to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address, and you can ask any questions or make any comments concerning this ordinance on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to move the ordinance.
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, discussion? Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas? Council President Seula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. I thought that was going to be the end of it, however, I was requested that a first reading by title-only ordinance be put on, so Mrs., uh, no, excuse me, Madam Clerk, I should call you.
Ordinance 2021-14, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to waive the full reading?
No, this is on first reading.
Sorry, it's first reading.
Madam Clerk is going to ask.
May I have a motion to accept ordinance 2021-14 as introduced?
I will move that council pass ordinance 2021-14 on its first reading by title only. Is the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for a second reading, and public hearing to be held 7:00 PM on August 23rd via, by video conference, via Zoom, or in the council chambers at a criminal justice building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second up.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi, roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas? Council President Seula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Motion to accept, we will revisit this again on August 23rd. There are no reports, but we do have public comments as required by state law. You may come forward, please give your name and address, and you will be given 10 minutes to ask any questions concerning any matters, great or small, on first call, second call?
Good evening, Richard Byrne, again, 11 Bissette Place. I should say that my prior comments on the ordinance and my comments now are not, I, I'm a member of the planning board, but I'm speaking my own capacity on both matters. So with respect to the retail facilities in town, you know, the state has decided that it is going to be regulated as a vice, much like alcohol or adult uses, where they leave up to the governing bodies and the various municipalities as to whether to permit it, where it's permitted, wide latitude, and it certainly falls within your purview to prohibit the retail facilities. But I was one of the members of the planning board who, in the recommendation to allow it in a small area, and my thought was that you could, you know, there's towns that are going to embrace it, they want it on Main Street, they want the retailers, on strip malls, they want all over the place, they're going to be, you know, the weed town, and you go to party. But I think we don't want that in, in South River corporate. So I, I came up with the idea of allowing it in a B2 business zone, where the zone is no less, no more, no less than 1,000 feet from a residential zone, which would essentially restrict it to that little triangle of the B2 zone at the north end of Old Bridge Turnpike that goes from Wawa up to the East Brunswick border. In terms of an operator, that, that'd be a, a good location. It's right off the highway, Old Bridge Turnpike is a heavily traveled road, and, you know, people coming in and out of town go past there. And it'd be a good location for, from an operator's perspective. It would also be, you know, not near any schools, residences, houses worship, that's sort of its own little thing up there, surrounded by warehouses. And the other thing that ran through my mind was equity. Like, people who have access to cars, they're going to drive to the Woodbridge Superstore, they're going to drive to Brunswick, they may drive up the, along Route 1 that's going in, off near North Airport, and they're going to bring it home, and they're going to smoke in their backyards, they're going to go out to the parks. So it, you know, people are going to bring it home and use it here. The people who don't have access to cars, you know, public transportation, if we allowed it in that one zone, this is a walkable town from end to end, the people who don't have access to transportation but wanted it to go and walk together, so. I, that was my recommendation in the, in the planning board meeting, and it would be my recommendation at the time of your convenience to consider that location as the, the place. And, you know, there's the risk of opportunity cost. Other towns adopt it, and it takes off gangbusters, and we come two years, three years later, hey, let's get in on it, and, you know, the, the market to open stores has, like, evaporated and we're left with licenses that nobody wants to buy, so. I, so it's certainly up to your purview and consideration. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. An intriguing idea. Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seula, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. There are no mayoral appointments, no consent resolutions, no new business, no governing body comments, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seula, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. We will see you on August 23rd, back on our regular schedule here at 61 Main Street. For now.